My name is Brian Hartwell, the mayor. This is a regular city council meeting of May 9th, 2016. The time is 7:30 PM. Could we please have a roll call?
Mayor Pro Tem Bliss.
Here.
Councilman Clark.
Present.
Councilman Corbett.
Here.
Councilman Geddings.
Here.
Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Councilman Soltis.
Here.
And Mayor Hartwell.
I'm here. Please rise if you're able for an invocation given by Councilman Dave Soltis and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. For tonight's invocation, I'd like to read an anonymous quote. "Sometimes I want to ask God why he allows poverty, famine, injustice throughout the world when he could do something about it. But I'm afraid that he may ask me the same question." Amen.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all." Thank you. Please be seated. We have several presentations tonight. The first one is a proclamation for National Public Works Week from May 15th to the 21st, 2016.
Yes, your honor. Whereas the public work services provided in our community are an essential part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water distribution, sewer maintenance, stormwater management, streets and highways, public buildings, fleet maintenance, parks, recreation, and solid waste collection. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of our community greatly depends on these facilities and services. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities and services, as well as their planning, design, and implementation, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of our Department of Public Services employees. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude toward and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Madison Heights does hereby proclaim the week of May 15th through the 21st, 2016, as National Public Works Week, and calls upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions that our public services employees make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life.
Thank you. Mr. Vitale, would you please accept this? Our next presentation tonight is to recognize the students from Lamphier and Madison High School who participated in the mock city council. Mr. Myers?
Yes, your honor. We have letters for each of the students, and I'll just take this moment to read the language from each letter. Dear student, the mayor and the city council of the City of Madison Heights would like to thank and recognize you for your participation in the 2016 Mock City Council Internship Program. As a participant in this year's program, you and your student colleagues were required to complete an application, submit an essay illustrating how the local government of Madison Heights impacts my life, job shadow municipal department heads, participate in a hands-on demonstration of public safety work, and conduct a mock city council meeting performing in the roles of mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and city council members. Your participation in the program's events demonstrated enthusiasm, intellectual curiosity, a desire to learn, and an orientation toward community service. Students such as you are a shining example of the leadership of tomorrow. We hope that this has proven to be a positive learning experience and would encourage you to look toward public service as you ponder your life choices. Government needs young innovative leaders such as you, and the skill set you demonstrated during the Mock City Council Internship Program would serve the public well. Furthermore, the City of Madison Heights is pleased to attest to your capabilities and skills that are necessary for becoming a successful college student and employee. Again, thank you for your participation in this year's Mock City Council Internship Program, and best wishes for a successful future assigned. Signed, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Congratulations, students. I'm going to embarrass each individually. I'll read your names alphabetically, and if you want to come up, as I read your name, shake my hand and shake the rest of council. I'll start with Autumn Boucher. And finally, George Youssef.
Congratulations.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Good job, George.
Congratulations.
Would any of the students like to make any comments? Thank you, thank you, thank you. And at home, stay tuned after our meeting when the students will run a mock meeting. Next presentation tonight is regarding Child Poverty Task Force. Can I please have a motion to add this to tonight's agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Soltis.
I'd like to make the motion to amend the agenda and place it on it.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Your honor.
Mr. Bliss.
Support.
Motion by Councilman Soltis, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, to add a Child Poverty Task Works presentation to the agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Mr. Soltis, the floor is yours.
I got this wireless mic. Is it working? All right, so I'm going to come over here. It's easier. So if you're surprised that this is going on, I apologize, but this is something I've been working on for quite a while, which I'm passionate about, and I spent hours on it. I want to thank City Manager Myers for helping out. I also got all the data from U.S. Census, and so I appreciate all the anonymous statisticians that helped me out. I called them up, and they were very helpful. So what brought me to this was we wrote a resolution in regards to poverty, and I think it was tied to earned income tax credit. And I saw there was statistics about a single mom, and it was astronomical how many were in poverty. So I dug a little deeper, and I was interested in, you know, poverty in Madison Heights were a little less than 30,000, but I felt that if we could look at it this way, create maybe a possible model for some of the other cities, surrounding cities, some of the bigger ones. So again, the title is Madison Heights Kids Poverty: Parents in Poverty. I looked at poverty in terms of children primarily, but then I did look at some adults and seniors. The second part is income inequality and then structural problems. So right there, out of the gate, Madison Heights poverty rate, this is 2014. I understand it's, you know, a year and a half, two years old, but I think it's still relevant if you look at the trends that I've noticed. So 1,800 children live in or near poverty, and 700 live in extreme poverty. Extreme poverty means half of what the government says the poverty level is at. So the guidelines here, if you want to define it, 50 percent below poverty is .5. Again, it's half of what the government level. On the next slide, I'll show you where it really comes into play. 100 percent means it's 1.00 poverty. That's a level, a threshold that the government deems is considered poverty. And 1.25 is just on the cusp of, you know, poverty. So it's 25 percent greater than 100 percent. If you can see those, so if you're talking about three people, two people, what, 15, $400, $15,400? If you have three people, so you've got three kids, now you're looking at, with one adult, you're looking at, what is it, 19,000? I mean, it's not even over 20,000. So you've got four people, it's 20,000. I mean, really, you know, how much, who could really live on that? You can't. That was the problem, and that's what I wanted to project in this PowerPoint. So here, here's the breakdown. So the U.S. Census has got an enormous amount of data and material. I spent hours digging in it, but I picked out this pertinent stuff. So if you look at the age groups, less than 18, extreme poverty, like I said, it's close to 700. And then you take it like half to 100 percent, 721, and then 31, and so forth. So the biggest gap here, or the biggest chunk, is the 18 to 64, the adults, and then the seniors. So if you look at seniors, you've got, you know, over 200 live in extreme poverty, and then it goes up from there. So now you're talking about 7,600 residents in Madison Heights now that are living in close to or in poverty. That's 26 percent of the population. Again, it's 30,000. We're not a city like, you know, some of the bigger ones, Warren, Grand Rapids of Detroit, but that's still 7,600 people that are struggling. This is a little differently. This is just showing you a pie chart of 100 percent or below poverty with those ages. It doesn't include the 1.25 poverty population. So now you're looking at about 1,200, 1,300 residents are right on that cusp. But if you look at it, the 18 to 54, almost half of the other two categories combined. So there's a social scientist, Dr. Saunders, said, you know, the reason I want to present this and look at it is a poverty measure has two important purposes, right? It's to measure the prevalence of poverty over time and across groups, and to measure the accuracy of benefit programs and other policies aimed at addressing deficiencies. Is it really working, and by how much? So this is comparison, you know, all this U.S. Census data for Madison Heights, it's beating, it's higher than the U.S. average last two years, and it's pretty much tied in 12 and 11. So that's saying that children under 18, we have a higher percentage that are in poverty than across the U.S. That's not to say, of course, right, other bigger cities have higher density of poverty, but nonetheless, it's up there. So I looked at this threshold in terms of family structures, because I think that's a critical component. So if you look at the extreme poverty that I have up there, again, that's less than 50 percent. So you have married couples, single moms, they're in that single digits. Then you move up to, like, on the cusp of poverty at 125, and this is what I'm talking about, the single moms are higher than the rest. There's a big gap there. Almost half the single moms, single mothers in the city are near poverty level. So, right, that raises the question. And then you have to think about what kind of policies are in place, if any? And we'll talk about that. Again, this is about the structure as well, but this is over a three-year period, well, 2012, yeah, three period, '13, '14. So now you see here, it really illustrates where the single mothers, especially with kids less than five, is way up there. And that's one of the first statistics that I saw that prompted me to dig deeper. Now you're looking at, at 12, you're over 70 percent, at 13, you're over 70 percent, single moms with kids five in poverty. 14, it dropped a little bit. But to me, that's a problem, and that's something that needs to be looked into. Let's talk about education. Education attainment by the householder. We've got, you know, three years of data. That was the latest that they had. But look at the non-high school grads. That's the dark, well, that's like a light blue. Those are way up there. Just a high school diploma, you know, for single moms, that's way up there. It's at least 30 percent, 40 percent. And if you see the bachelor degree, there is, according to the U.S. Census for 13, there was zero. So education obviously plays a key component, right? Not just the high school, but higher-level education. Now we're talking about insecurity with jobs. We look at married couples, all families, at least half are employed, and then with children over 18, you know, it's higher, 61 percent. Single households, doesn't differentiate between male or female, but it's a little bit less. You're at 44 percent employed, and 48 with children over 18. What that shows me is that on the second, on the married couples with children over 18, I imagine the 18-year-old is helping out, but it also means that, indicates to me, working poor, you know, that term you hear, because they're not, they're still in poverty, and yet 61 percent, 50 percent are still, are working. So what are the programs help, to help those in poverty is the SNAP, Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program. So if you look at, I broke it down for 14. What does it really mean? So those less than 18 children, about 1,100 are on SNAP. The seniors, about almost 1,000. So now you're looking at those in that extreme poverty level, you're 15, a little over 1,500. But the unemployment, unemployed, is 352. Now, why is there a gap there? To me, it would illustrate working poor again, because they're employed, but yet they're still living in extreme poverty. It's, what, four times, five times the amount? Then it talks about one worker and two workers. See, you've got 650 under 700 and 500. And then what really startled me was the disability, was 1,200. You know, when we passed the ordinance to not shut off somebody's water, I, there was six people that called me up. It's a small sample size, I understand, but at least 75 percent of the people said they were disabled. They had some form of disability, and that's why they were behind on their payments in poverty. So I think disability need to really look at. This is another snapshot. So, you know, you hear people say, wow, they're getting free money, and why aren't they doing this, why aren't they doing that, and all that stuff? But if you break it down, I, when this article came out, a woman did call me up, her grandmother, said she was raising her grandkids, and I asked her about SNAP, and she said, listen, I'm not, it does, it's, I'm grateful, but it's really not making the dent that I need. And this is why, if you have a family of three, that's $170 a person, or per person, three meals a day, 30 days, you're under $2 a meal. What kind of, what kind of, you know, nutritional value are you getting out of that? So another great thing, the Brookings Institution, they have the data from at least 2013 of Michigan, excuse me, earned income tax credit that I talked about, one of the programs. And there's a graph that shows here, and then it shows a number of filers in Madison Heights. It's all Madison Heights. Those without children, one child, two child, and then three or more. The big chunk is one qualifying child. But if you look at the chart, right, see the ones that are getting up to the 700, only 10,000 are making 10 grand, 15 grand, 20 grand. That's your big spike there. You see that? And then it just declines. Again, it's working because you don't get the credit unless you are employed. But again, I think it points directly back to the working poor, where you're making 10, 15, 20 grand a year, you know, with children. They also, the data also has, according to the data, it said, children of foreign parents, foreign-born parents, and you guys, under poverty level, 612, and just above is 470. Now, it doesn't, I wasn't able to find out if that's built into the 1,800 and the 700 before. I don't know, but that's something that needs to be looked at as well. They had data broken down by school district. So we have the Lamphier and Madison. If you can see up there, so according to the data, they had Lamphier, what, 17 to 22 percent, families live in poverty, and then in the Madison School District, you're at 31, 42. So this, and I learned a lot too from this. This is an index created by one of the statistician geniuses, right? And he made up this complicated formula to gauge between disparity. So zero is full equality, and one is not. So now you got, here's some Brown Lake cities. You've got Michigan, Oakland County, they're all like 4.6, .46, 4.7. Hazel Park in Madison Heights. So what this really means is they have and have nots. So it's not necessarily the poverty averages, but it's discrepancy. It's really what it is, is you're taking away the middle class. So now you have a real discrepancy with those that have real affluent and those that are in the poverty level. So if you want to look at the United States, overall, those other countries are right damn at the top, where we have less equality, more inequality. You've got Japan, Sweden, Germany, way down there, Denmark, Canada. And then the ones that are higher are Peru, Brazil, Argentina. This is really discouraging slide where they talk about intergenerational mobility, where if a child is born in poverty, the chances of getting out of it are very slim. If you look at Michigan, it's all the dark orange, and that's for a reason, right? That's a higher level of less mobility potential. So you see some of the southern states and then Michigan. So the lighter color means more upward mobility, and the darker means less. In the world, where does the United States rank for child poverty? Second for last. Second for last. Most wealthiest country on earth. What does this all mean, right? Here's a slide that I took from the data center with their permission. So children in poverty are much more likely to experience exposure to violence, chronic neglect, accumulated burden of economic hardship. And they did studies, and the PET scans. They argue that the poverty may be the singlest threat to a child's healthy brain development. So now it becomes internal, so it's an external causing brain dysfunction. Not to mention, you know, the flint, water, and mercury, and lead, and everything, but this is like an external factors with all these violence, chronic neglect, and things like that. All right, so what are the takeaways? Poverty stigmas still continue to exist, right? Nobody wants to talk about it, no one, everyone thinks that it's personal, it's cultural, it's not anything well systemic or system-wide, but it is, in my opinion. Number two, way too many children living in poverty here in Madison Heights. Completely unacceptable, a number of children living in extreme poverty. 31, 26 percent, like I said, are citizen residents living in near or in poverty. Madison Heights, as the slide showed, sees U.S. poverty over the last two years for the U.S. Single mothers, I keep going back to that, because there has to be something there that's causing that, that somehow we can alleviate. Single mothers overall have the most financial difficulty, especially as the chart showed with children under six. And again, you know, that phrase, working poor, there's, on those slides show numerous examples of working poor in our city. Higher education is critical. You just, in this day and age, you just can't get by with the high school education or less. There's the fact that there might be additional refugee poverty that we don't know about. That's something we can do about. That's a huge crisis, the refugee crisis. SNAP and EITC proven to work, but it's completely underfunded, and it continues to be the chosen programs that get cut year after year. Intergenerational mobility, immobility, handicaps the children's future, there's no doubt, right? It just destroys the American dream. Disability and healthcare costs, I think, are totally overlooked. The six people that I talked to, I think almost all of them mentioned the financial burden that they have from healthcare costs, especially the ones on disability, you know, they got in car accidents, they had surgery, they did this, and now they're just swamped with healthcare costs. You know, and everybody's Obamacare and this, that, but, you know, you've got people that are starving and living in poverty because they just are, they have to file bankruptcy, and that's still, they're underwater. And in my opinion, the detrimental effects of childhood poverty is reprehensible. Something that this country, as well as the world, has been struggling with for centuries. It just seems to continue. You know, this is something I had a question mark. I don't know what the next steps are, you know? I mean, it has to be a community effort, it has to be people wanting to get involved. You know, when that article came out, one person called, inquiring. I don't know. I think we, I think there's something we can do as a city, on a city level. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Soltis. Next on the agenda tonight, is approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions? Hearing none, we'll move on to item A, business licenses initial. We have six applicants. Number one, Treat Dreams, a food preparation business. Number two, World Class Institute of Martial Arts, a martial arts school. Number three, Omama Fitness and Glamour Salon LLC, a fitness/ beauty salon. Number four, Neighborhood Property Group LLC, a real estate service business. Number five, Vape Express, an electronic cigarette shop. And number six, Pure Clouds, a vape products shop. What's the wish of city council for these six?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Clark?
I'd make a motion to approve, number one, Treat Dreams, a food preparation business, which is a change of location. Number two, World Class Institute of Martial Arts, a martial arts school, that is also a change of location. Number three, Omama Fitness and Glamour Salon LLC, a fitness and beauty salon. Now that is a new business. Number four, Neighborhood Property Group LLC, a real estate service business, that is also a new business. Number five, Vape Express, an electronic cigarette shop, that is a new business. Number six, Pure Clouds, a vape product shop, that is also a new business. So it's good to see we have, out of six businesses, we have four that are new to the city, and two that remain the same and want to stay here.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett? Support. Any discussion on this item, these six items?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Soltis?
Quick question. Vape Express, is anyone here representing them? So are you, so you're aware of the new ordinance that we passed, correct?
Yeah.
Wasn't that in regards to 18 and younger?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. That's one I was referring to. Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Motion by Councilman Clark, supported by Councilman Corbett, to approve all business licenses A1 through A6. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. They all passed. Congratulations. We have one applicant for a temporary/ seasonal business license, K&amp;G Fashion Store. What's the wish of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Clark?
I'd make a motion to approve the temporary and seasonal business licenses for K&amp;G Fashion Store.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Scott?
Second.
Thank you. Is there discussion? Motion by Councilman Clark, supported by Councilwoman Scott, to approve temporary seasonal business license to K&amp;G Fashion Store. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next on the agenda is B1, public hearing. At this time, I'll open the meeting to the public to discuss the fiscal year 2016-17 budget resolution and tax levy.
Your honor, if I could make some introductory comments before hearing?
Start with that.
Yes, sir. The fiscal year 2016-17 budget workshop was held on April 20th, 2016. This public hearing is scheduled to receive public comments on the proposed budget, to appropriate funds, to establish a tax levy for the budget appropriations, and to approve changes to department fees. Pursuant to Pursuant to Section 8.4 of the city charter, a resolution has been drafted, which, if approved, will adopt the fiscal year 2017 budget, appropriate the funds, levy the property tax, and approve several fee adjustments. Following the public hearing, staff and I recommend that council approve the fiscal 2016-17 budget resolution, and I would note that our city charter, Section 7.6B, requires a supermajority of five votes to appropriate funds and set the tax rate for the budget.
Thank you, sir. I'll open the public hearing now. If anyone would like to discuss this item, please come to the podium. The fiscal year 2016-17 budget resolution and tax levy. No one has signified they want to speak, so I'll close the public hearing. What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Sir, I move that the council adopt as recommended the 2016-17 budget with the accompanying tax levy resolution.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott?
Second.
Thank you. Is there discussion?
Your honor?
Mr. Bliss?
I just want to say again, and I know I said this in the budget workshop, but there is a line item in this budget that is $14,000 to replace the chairs that we're sitting on, as well as the chairs in our conference rooms. I disagree with this line item. I'm going to vote for the budget as a whole tonight because this line item will be brought back to council when there is a bid, and that'll go as a separate council agenda item. But again, for the record, I want to say very, very bluntly, that there are better uses of $14,000 of taxpayer money than replacing chairs. I wholeheartedly believe that. I've offered suggestions on how it could be spent, and I'd like for us to continue that dialogue before the actual bid award for the chairs does take place, because there are a lot of other ways that we can spend $14,000 of taxpayer money. That's it, your honor.
Thank you, Mr. Bliss. I wanted to add one thing to the discussion, if maybe the city manager could give a detailed report on the different millages and whether they're staying the same or being risen. I think we're pretty much holding steady.
Yes, yes, your honor, council members. We are holding steady, holding the line of our ten millages. There is only one, which is the fire station's bond millage, which is going up by five one-hundredths of a mil, and that is only to reflect the city's debt service coming up in fiscal 2017 to make the payments on the bonds for the fire station, but otherwise, the millage rates are holding where they were in fiscal 2016.
Thank you. Any additional discussion from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
For what it's worth, department heads, the treasury department, the city treasurer and the city manager, you guys make our jobs very easy because you put a lot of hard work into this, and I just want to tip my hat to all of you. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Thank you. A motion by Councilman Corbett, supported by Councilwoman Scott, to approve as recommended the fiscal year 2016-17 budget resolution and tax levy. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. The next public hearing, B2, is special approval 1603 regarding metal plating at 32370 Howard.
Yes, your honor. Special approval is required to allow a metal plating facility in the M1 Light Industrial District. The applicant proposes to use the existing vacant 13,422 square foot building for metal plating. Parking meets minimum ordinance requirements, and the applicant proposes to remove two non-conforming front yard parking spaces on Howard, which will bring the parking lot into compliance with our current standards. If special approval is granted, the containment and drainage system will be reviewed and approved as part of the permitting process to ensure compliance with the city and Michigan Department of Environmental Quality requirements. The proposed hours of operation are Monday through Friday from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. The site plan review committee has reviewed the plan, and all plan review comments have been addressed. Should council approve this request following the public hearing, the following conditions are recommended. One, removal of the two front yard non-conforming parking spaces prior to occupancy, and two, compliance with city and MDEQ standards for the water and air containment systems.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I'll open a public hearing. If there's anyone in the public that would like to speak to the council regarding public hearing on special approval 1603, please come to the podium now. No one has indicated they want to comment, so we'll close the public hearing. What's the wish of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Clark?
I'd make a motion to approve special approval 16-03 at 32370 Howard Metal Plating. Number two, with the conditions recommended. Number one, removal of the two front yard non-conforming parking spaces prior to occupancy. The second one is compliance with city and MDEQ standards for the water and air contaminant systems.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Support, sir.
Discussion? We have a motion by Councilman Clark, seconded by Councilman Corbett, to approve special approval number 1603 with the two conditions cited by staff. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next on the agenda, is there anything on tonight's agenda that anyone in the audience would like to be brought forward now? Seeing none, we'll go meeting open to the public. Now's your time. If anyone would like to address City Council on any subject, please come to the podium. It's your option, but if you'd like, please give us your name and address for the record, and if you could be so polite to limit your comments to three minutes or less. Good evening, Ms. Moore.
My name's Gloria Moore. I live at 27368 Dartmouth. Friends of the Madison Heights area senior citizens is having its third Tuesday meeting again at seven o'clock. This one's going to be our election, and it's going to be over at Wilkinson Middle School in room 204. And beverages and snacks are on us. Everyone is welcome to come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address City Council? Please come up now. Hello, Mr. Capizzo?
Jim Capizzo, 863 Van Nuys. A couple of things. We had the Supreme Court nomination being held up, so Senator Patrick Leahy wrote, "For more than forty years, the U.S. Senate has held a confirmation vote on Supreme Court nominees seventy days on average after their formal nomination." So that gives us some insight into what's going on there. I have a magazine, The Washington Monthly, an article that discusses many of the laws that they got rid of to help destroy the American middle class. So you can get these at Barnes &amp; Noble. And so I'll just give this to the council for them to look at.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, Jim. I always appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to address City Council? Hi, good evening.
Good evening. Hillary Taylor, 26131 Wolverine Street. I have a couple of questions. What is the current library millage? Is there a millage on the library right now?
Yes, we have an answer for you. I'm sorry. The library millage, what's the current library millage?
Just one mill.
We have one?
One mill.
We're at one. If the community wanted to gather a petition to support two, would that be entertained by the council?
Well, sure.
Could it be placed on the ballot in November?
Our charter specifies the rules, so we would follow whatever the charter rules say.
Okay.
Sometimes the state changes those laws on voter referendums.
Mm-hmm.
And there's several outcomes. You need so many signatures, what, 25% of maybe the last gubernatorial electors? Don't quote me, it changes all the time.
Okay.
Sure, if people present a petition to City Council, we have options, I think, to accept it on the spot or to defer it to a public vote in an upcoming election.
Right, like the November ballot. Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just a comment. Could I maybe suggest that you give the city attorney's office a call, because I have rattling around in the back of my head that there may be some special something regarding millages. If you're talking about putting a millage on the ballot, I don't know what's involved with that. I don't, I think it's more than just, but like I said, rather than sit here and just guess, maybe, I would direct you to the attorney's office, give them a call, they're nice people, they'll chat with you and get a little chance to research it, to give you the answer.
And in terms of your $14,000 and your presentation, I would suggest that it might do well for Madison Heights to get a food bank, because we don't have one right now. And every time I try to donate something, I have to go to Royal Oak to donate to their food bank. So that would be my other suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Would anyone else like to address City Council? Meeting's open to the public. Okay, we'll move on. Thank you. Item C on the agenda, communications, there are none, so we'll go to item D, reports from the fire chief regarding Michigan Mutual Aid Box Alarm System Agreement.
Provided for council's review and consideration is the amended Michigan Mutual Aid Box Alarm System, or Michigan MABUS agreement. The purpose of the new agreement is to add a provision under Section 8 for cost recovery regarding special operations teams. The revised agreement now states that a Michigan MABUS special operations team may collect full cost recovery instead of providing the first eight hours for free. This provision allows the respective special operations teams the ability to invoice for full cost recovery for any response. Due to the expensive nature of creating and sustaining a special operations team, which includes advanced training, specialized equipment, and an increased number of exercises, the MABUS Association recognizes that it may be cost prohibitive to allow the first eight hours of response to be at no cost. In addition, the agreement also defines the meaning of a special operations team to include personnel with the requisite training and skill for hazardous materials response, tactical rescue response, and incident management. Staff and I recommend that council approve the new Michigan MABUS agreement.
Thank you, sir. What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Sir, I move that the council approve as recommended the new Michigan M-A-B-A-S agreement.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Clark?
Second.
Any discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
I was wondering if I could call on the chief, he's sitting there too calmly tonight. If you could just briefly discuss how this, the thing that I had to read about three times was what was and wasn't free for my eight hours' worth of time and effort in the cost recovery?
Yes.
How that's triggered, could you just briefly?
Yes, your honor. When it comes to fire-related incidents where we would be calling out of MABUS additional help, when it comes to fire-related, that is free for the first eight hours. This is specifically addressing specialized calls, hazmat, tactical rescue, and incident management, where a community would call these specialized teams out where it's very expensive to house these teams, so we're able to get cost recovery for that and not give out the first eight hours as free.
So in the course of normal firefighting?
Mm-hmm.
Whatever that is, but a typical house fire, structure fire, that does not require specialized units?
Correct, that is all free.
Okay.
That's all free.
But?
This is for, your honor, this is for large-scale events in the state or out of the rest of the country.
Okay.
Because in the previous provision, it was free for eight hours. So this is cleaning it up.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Motion made by Councilman Corbett, supported by Councilman Clark, to approve as recommended the report from the fire chief for the Michigan MABUS to approve the association agreement. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next on the agenda, we'll go down to item G, ordinances. We have one for reading tonight, ordinance number 2112, an amendment to the animal control ordinance.
Yes, your honor. On April 11th, council adopted ordinance 2112 on the first reading to strengthen our current regulations on tethering dogs within the city. Per council's direction on April 11th, presented for council's consideration is an alternative ordinance which staff and the city attorney's office believe is enforceable given our available resources. The proposed ordinance also takes into account council's requested provisions, as well as concerns from the Michigan Political Action Committee for animals. Staff, the city attorney's office, and I recommend that council adopt ordinance 2112 on the second and final reading.
Thank you, sir. What's the wish of City Council?
Your honor?
Mr. Bliss?
I move that we adopt the revised version of ordinance 2112 on the second and final reading, and that is the revised version with the reasonable controls section in it.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Scott?
Second.
Is there discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
I had been prepared to support the ordinance as originally submitted, but the change of as recommended have lost my support on this ordinance. I say that as a dog owner here this evening, and I really, what started life as just a basic attempt to treat animals in a humane and irrational fashion has now become something greater. Now the city council purports to go into people's backyards to tell them how to maintain their animals, absent, absent some evidence of abuse or neglect. In and of itself, it purports that tethering will be assumed to be, well, under the terms of the ordinance, illegal, and in and of itself, an inhumane act. It indicates that it's, you know, it was suggested it was a public safety issue. The evidence is at least strained on that. I'm not, I think it makes sense intuitively, I think it makes sense that if you tethered animal, we'll have socialization problems and prob, I buy that. I'm just saying that apparently there's not a great deal of evidence to support that at the moment. But at the end of the day, what we've got is a situation where the city council now is going to tell homeowners that the, you know, tethering as a secondary security option to keep animals in. I had a beagle once. I'm a bad example, I live in a condominium, so my, I can't let my dog loose under any circum, I don't have a backyard to let him go out in. But beagles are tough dogs to keep constrained, and I think I could understand a set of circumstances under which somebody may rely on a secondary restraint besides just simply the fence or whatever the privacy fence of the yard. But I mean, it's just preposterous to me that the council's going to say that that is, that that in and of itself is going to be evidence of abuse in some, in some, in some, absent any other evidence. In other words, just simply that the dog has been tethered for an extended period of time over, I think it's what, three hours? Is it three hours? I'm sorry, I saw some numbers somewhere in here, or was it just an extended period? I don't remember how it was worded.
Mr. Mayor?
What was that?
The revised ordinance does not contain a three-hour time limit.
Okay.
But it does provide that if the, if the animal is tethered, that it requires a person to be home who is capable of controlling the animal.
Yeah. And that gets a little dicey. I don't know. I, when I was a kid, we used to go to school and they would have us home, and I remember my parents used to tell me, when you get home, first one home lets the dog out, because the dog has probably got its paws crossed at that point. So the dog would go out in the yard and we'd be inside watching TV, and the dog would be chasing squirrels, and everybody was happy. Now granted, it's been a while since the 50s, but now we've got, I don't know, am I responsible? At 14, 15, we took out the 18-year-old provision. We're silent on that. As I said, what this ordinance is absent of, it's clearly been written by an outside agency to meet an objective, which is fine, I'm glad somebody's out there working for the animals, I really am. But I think these wide brush shots at trying to enforce rules, I know a lot of people who love animals, love dogs, and they probably would find themselves on the wrong side of this ordinance, so. I was, I thought that the original ordinance that was suggested by staff was fine. I thought it provided a reasonable alternative. But like I said, absent some other indication of abuse of the animal, there has to be, there has to be some indication of abuse or something before you start ticketing people and before you start just simply defining certain behavior as illegal. I guess that's it, sir. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Mr. Geddings?
Could we possibly hear from Suzette on this subject? Would you be willing to say something?
Please. Your honor? Mr. Bliss?
Just as a clarification while she's walking up here, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong from the staff, the only major change from the ordinance that we talked about and discussed last time that Councilman Corbett agreed with, and the one tonight, it's only two items. That is, number one, it's unlawful for somebody to let their animal to run out, you know, without any reasonable control, so they have to be on a leash, on a tether, or in an adequately fenced yard. Or the other addition is that you cannot leave an animal tethered or confined without having a person at home who is monitoring and supervising the animal, who's capable of controlling it. So in the example provided from the '50s, that would be 100% lawful under this ordinance. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor?
Your honor, yeah, those statements are correct, but also we did make several other minor revisions, including adding that the dog should not come within three feet of the property line, in addition to three feet of another tethered dog. And I believe we added swivels.
Mr. Mayor, there is also some swivel requirements.
And we added swivels to the requirements, too.
Mr. Gettings? Did you have any questions for our animal control officer?
Maybe she just could give her opinion of the synopsis, if you'd be so kind, Suzette.
Thank you, your honor. The first part of the reasonable control, the A, that the animal's not to run at large, that has already been in our ordinance. We just added the Section B, where they have to be monitored by somebody who's capable of controlling the dog. So the first part of that ordinance has been in our ordinance. As the, Mr. Mayor said, we only made some other changes to the original one, as the swivel, the not being within three feet of the property line so the dog doesn't go over the fence and strangle themselves or get tangled with another dog where they can again hurt themselves. The, we're not opposing, making it illegal to tether your dog, just that if you are going to tether your dog, that you do it in a humane way, and that is fair for everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Sherman, do we go to the detail to actually define the terms monitor? Or do we define the word supervise? Or do we just refer just to the general definitions under English dictionaries?
I think the latter, Mr. Mayor. When you look at the definition section of the ordinance as drafted, we included a definition of what's meant by tethering.
Correct.
But we do not have a specific definition of the terms contained in 5.5 sub-B, which is monitoring or supervising. But the intent is that if the dog is going to be tethered, the intent is, is that a person must be home who is monitoring and supervising the animal to the extent that that person is capable of controlling the animal if there's an issue.
It's not just tethering. We wanted to be fair to all dog owners, not just to dog owners who are tethering, but if your dog is even loose in your backyard, that somebody is home. Most of the animals that do come to us that are running at large are from people who are not home and their dogs were left outside, whether they're tethered or untethered. So it, we wanted to make sure that we treated all dog owners fairly and properly. It, the, I guess the monitoring or supervising the animal would kind of refer back to breed type and is, if you have a small dog, yes, is a 13-year-old going to be able to handle a small, you know, 10-pound Yorkie reasonably? Yes. Is an eight-year-old going to be able to handle a Great Dane? Probably not. So I think that's why we kind of left it a little more broad, so that it encompasses my, or animal controls experience and expertise, and we can determine whether that is reasonable or not, for that person to be able to handle that animal.
Thank you, Suzette.
Any additional discussion? Thank you. Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, supported by Councilwoman Scott, to adopt the revised version of the amended ordinance number 2112, which includes Section 5.5, the reasonable control section, regarding anti-tethering. This will be approval on second reading. All in favor, please say aye.
Can I ask a roll call, sir?
Okay, please. We'll do a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Um, Mayor Pro Tem Bliss?
Yes.
Councilman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
No.
Councilman Gettings?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scott?
Yes.
Councilman Soltis?
Yes.
Mayor Hartwell?
I vote yes. Motion passes. We'll move on to approval of the minutes. Can I please have a motion to approve the special minutes from the special city council meeting of 4/20/16?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Clark?
I'd make a motion that the meeting, or the minutes of the special meeting for April 20th, 2016, be adopted as printed.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Support.
Motion by Councilman Clark, seconded by Councilman Corbett, to adopt as printed the meeting minutes from April 20, 2016. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. Can I have a motion regarding the minutes from April 25, 16?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
I move that the minutes from the 25th be approved.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Soltis?
Second, please.
Motion by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilman Soltis, to approve the minutes from April 25, 16. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say no. Motion passes. We'll move on to appointments. Are there any...